I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I was not at the last meeting and I'm sorry for that. We were rushing, could not make it in time. Can't get approval of the May 11th meeting.
I'll make the motion that we approve the May 11 minutes as submitted.
Can we do the roll call first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that part. Yes, we can do the roll call. See, I missed one meeting. Please, Katie, can we do the roll call?
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Chairman Mobley.
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Sikes.
Here.
And we do have a new planning commissioner, but he had a prior commitment and was not able to make it soon. So and that is going to be Commissioner Mike Wells.
All right. Okay, now can I get that motion made again?
I'll make the motion that we approve the May 11 minutes as submitted.
I'll second it.
All right.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sikes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, oral comment from the public. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest not on the agenda. Speakers address commission limited to, we're going to give you about three or four or five minutes, whatever. If there's not a lot going on, be advised by law, the commission cannot take any action or deliberation on issues pending during oral comment. So to provide that, Katie's going to post some information up there. There you go. So anybody at home wants to call in, talk about anything going on with the city right now that we can might be able to help you with or mean, please do so. So anybody do anything fun lately? I had to perform my first wedding.
Wow.
Did you cry?
No. It wasn't. No, I got to perform. It was one of the guys from work. He was getting his wife. They're getting married at their house. They were going to go to Justice of the Peace and with all the COVID thing going on, there was limited times, stuff like that. And so you start trying to pick time to be off work. And say, hey, man, you know, I could do that. So I ended up doing it for him. So it was kind of fun.
Next up is funerals, Mr. Mobley.
What's that?
Funerals are next.
Yeah, funerals are next. I can do those.
Well, and during COVID, we baptize in Listerine.
Baptisms are a different thing. No, 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 no. I'll be that guy in the video dropping a baby. I know me. Be nervous talking. Talk with my hands too much. Be carrying a baby and trying to get, do that. All right, Katie, we hearing anything or seeing anything?
No public comment.
Okay.
Motion that we close our public comment at this time.
I'll second that.
There we go. All right, we're going to move on to our business at hand tonight. Public hearing to consider the approval of a variance for reduced rear setback from 25 feet to 20 feet. This, the project site is 190 Franklin Court. So Liz, can we get the background, please?
Yes.
Good question. Do we need to vote on that motion for the close of comment?
I thought we said we don't have to do everyone.
Yeah, for the, the public comment, we, it can actually be closed by the, by the chairman.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so I am going to share the screen and walk you through the exhibits and describe the variance request as we go through those. So good evening, planning commissioners.
Thank you.
And let's see how we do on sharing here. Share this one. Oh. No, I'm going to go back. Share this one. There we go. Okay, so this is a request for a variance from the zoning regulations. Yeah, excuse me. In this case, the zoning regulation requested to be modified is the side, sorry, the rear setback. This, the project site is vacant currently, so there's a proposal to construct a single family residence and the sorry. Can I ask, Katie, can you, is it the single screen or is it the screen with the, the smaller next slide view that you're seeing? Is it just the one image?
Yes, we're just seeing just the aerial.
Okay, great. Thank you. I've got two screens here. And so yeah, this, you can see the vacant parcel here. It's located on Franklin Court, which is off of Franklin Avenue, which is northeast of Runerville Road and Newburgh Road across from, basically across from Newburgh Park off of Newburgh. So this is a relatively, it's not new anymore, but it's, you know, fairly recent cul-de-sac. And you can see that the, the southwest side is constructed with more lots or more of the lots are built. And now the uphill side is being constructed. There's actually, there's two homes, one on this corner and one on, on Franklin. So the other two are vacant and then the project site is in between. And you can see, so it is approximately 25 foot slope on that parcel. And if you visited the site, you'll know that there was a rock riprap to stabilize that slope. I think that's probably when they cut the road in. And then there's a driveway, potential driveway location at the west or northwest or west end of that parcel. And then the other building of note is the single family residence that's to the north. So that's the nearest property that is, you know, potentially impacted or that could be in some situations. I'm not, I don't think it is in this case, but we will talk about that some more. And then this is the zoning map and the street has a split zone through it. So the zoning boundary goes through that cul-de-sac Franklin Court and the parcels to the west are in the R16 smaller lot size. And that's because it's on a more level slope. And then the more hilly side is in the R110 zone. And that has a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size and it also has larger setbacks. The R110 setbacks for all lots is 30 feet in the front. That would be off of the street side. And then the two sides, like in the R16, like normally there it's five and five on each side. In the R110, the minimum one side is seven feet and the two sides combined together have to be at least 20 feet. So if you were seven feet on one side, that would mean you'd be 13 on the other. And either side could be the, the seven foot minimum. And then the rear setback is 20 feet. So that would be on the north side. So the applicant is requesting that this rear side be reduced from 25 to 20. And this is the site plan. And you can see the single family, the footprint is here. Upper middle portion. And then you can see that rock wall at the base of the, the parcel right above the road. And that's, that's a pretty steep slope there. And then the rest of the slope is it averages 25%. And so the road, because of that steep slope, the road has to, you know, is pretty restricted as to where it could go. Instead of going straight up into, you know, steep, it would be too steep for that. So we have to design it where it's curved around so that they can reduce the, the slope. But what that does is take up a larger portion of the property and pushes the house into this corner. And that is part of the reason for the, you know, the challenge of building on that lot. And then this is just a closer view of that same site plan. And you can see the 25 foot setback is this dashed line. And they're proposing to project into that setback by five feet, leaving a 20 foot setback, which is still larger, just for comparison, that's larger than that R16 zone across the street, which has a 15 foot rear yard setback. We got here. So this is the elevations of the, of the structure. And you can see it's two story and it is on the slope. So it actually is not going to project above that hill, you know, that defines, it's not going to project over it's the hill where the neighboring property will see that set, see that roof. So they're only going to see the top of it. It's not going to affect their view. And you can see that there's, what they're proposing is a retaining wall. You know, to cut into the hill and create that flat portion over to the left is the driveway and the garage. So it's, I think it's a daylight basement. So there's a garage on one side and then the basement on the other. And then the upper floor is the, basically the residence, a 1600 square foot residence. And so this view, you can see how it's put into the hillside so that, you know, it's, it helps keep the elevation low. And what they've also done to kind of keep the height of the building low is they're designing these sort of almost flat roofs. They're actually hip roofs. They're not quite flat, but they might look flat from below. And it's just going to, you know, reduce the height instead of having a steep gable or something like that, which is, you know, going to add quite a bit of height. In this case, the, the roof line is kept really low and for design purposes, they've got these nice big overhangs, which is sort of a, I think it's maybe a mid-century modern or a prairie roof. And again, it just keeps the, you know, the mass or the height of the building a lot lower. So that, that, I think that really mitigates the, you know, moving the setback.
Hey Liz, another question on setbacks, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So on one of the earlier slides, there's quite a discrepancy between where the road at, between the paved area and the lines on the map. You had that overlay and it was shifted. And so are you setting back from the line of record or are you setting back from the actual edge of the driveway, edge of the cul-de-sac, the roadway?
The front setback will stay the same. So the front setback is the minimum for the R110 is 30 feet. And so they're keeping a 30 foot setback there.
Third, so that's 30 foot off the edge of the road, which becomes more than 30 feet off the edge of the property line because the property line goes into the road.
Yeah, we measure from the back of the, the setback is measured from the back of the sidewalk.
The back of sidewalk.
Yeah, and there's a right of way on that.
Right. Right. Yeah, I was just curious. You know, that's part of a discrepancy there, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the, I don't have the subdivision map. So actually, I'm not really sure if that sidewalk is in the property line, property or not.
Okay, yeah, it was one of the earlier slides that showed that.
Oh, they're showing, they're showing here the property boundary is that whatever fuchsia pink line. And I'm not sure which one. I'm not sure.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, this map, the boundaries really can't be relied upon. This is just for reference. This is the the cities, we pay for a parcel database. So we have property ownership and other property information on each parcel. And the property lines, they just overlaid on an aerial and they don't really, as you can see, they don't adjust very well. The property don't, so this has shifted over quite a bit.
So the setback really occurs from that actual sidewalk, the boundary line of the paved area.
Yes.
Okay.
Especially because this is a newer subdivision. I think it's 2008. You know, if it were like in 1950s or whatever, up in Camden Heights, you see a lot of that where the sidewalk is actually an easement on the property line. And then it gets, you know, we have to be more careful about it. But on the new subdivisions, it's always done with the sidewalk being dedicated with the street to the city and then the property is at the back of the lot. And that's, that's what they show here. So you know, we're pretty confident that that's the case. And any, any, you know, we are still measuring it from the back of the sidewalk. So it matches either way or it's consistent with the code.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, and here's a, here's the street view. And you can see the steepness at the front. There is a little bit, so they will be putting in a sidewalk at the base of that. And then the property line is pretty much the edge of the photograph. The house looks pretty close, but it's actually about 30 feet, I think, from the property line to the house, the neighboring house. And let's see. Here's a better reference that shows, you know, there's a pretty good distance. It's about 30 feet, I would say, from this property line to that house. So the actual distance between the new house and that existing neighboring house is about 50, you know, it's at least 50 feet. And again, it's below their view line. So the findings, the zoning code does require certain findings to be made that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances applying to the property involved that do not apply generally to other property uses in the same district. And in this case, the hardship basically for this parcel is that it's an area. And there's a few things. We've got factors relating to the slope, a lot size, and that just the general, the configuration or the boundaries that all kind of contribute to it being challenging to design. Again, so the slope is about 25% and that really kind of restricts where the house can be placed and how the driveway, you know, kind of pushes that, the house back. The lot size is, is small, it's smaller than the other parcels. It's, I believe it's point, it's less than a quarter acre and the others are all above a quarter acre. So you know, that's a little bit of a contributing factor. And then just the configuration where the frontage is, you know, it's got this narrow shape and you know, that kind of helps push the house back to, you know, compared to the longer how parcel where they would have more room to spread out. And that the finding that owing to those exceptional circumstances, the literal enforcement of the provisions of this title would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship not created by or attributable to the applicant. So yeah, there's nothing, you know, there's really, aside from making a smaller house, there's nothing else. The property owner didn't create the problem. It's really a physical, physical attributes relating to that parcel that you know, a combination of those traits and also the R110 zoning with the large setbacks that don't really quite match the layout. I think the R110 zoning is more appropriate, you know, to have these larger lots, like in the surrounding area. And probably when these lots were created, you can see they're not much bigger than the R110 lots. And I think in hindsight, it would have been much better to have fewer lots here, you know, four or even three. Given the zoning and the setbacks and the, the steepness of those slopes. So, and then the other, just other findings that the potential impacts to the neighbors is something that we would consider. And I think there, you know, there's plenty of distance, like I said, about 50 feet between the two buildings and that the only one that's really, it's sitting above this parcel and looking down. And there's, you know, greater distance to the other. So they're not impacted. And I think we can see that, you know, with the distance and the height that this, this other house has, that they, they won't be impacted by that shifting that house by five feet. So it's basically compatible with, with that neighborhood. And with that, the recommendation is that the planning commission approve the variance and I'll hand that back to the commission for any questions or discussion.
Okay, thanks Liz. Anybody have any comments?
I have a question for Liz or perhaps someone else. Will the neighboring parcels on the right and the left have similar special circumstances based upon the slope of the land or other special circumstances there in that neighborhood?
I mean, there are conditions relating to this parcel that are unique that, you know, take it, remove it from that class or separate it out that make it distinct from the other parcels. It is, it's smaller than the others and it's got a steeper slope than the one to the left. And it's, you know, clearly smaller than the one to the right. So I think with, you know, with careful design, I think those two should be fine to be built on. But, you know, again, a lot of times these issues don't come up until they're getting designed. So you know, I think that there are enough unique traits about this, this parcel that make it, you know, standalone as warranting the variance.
A follow-up list? With the lot to the right, as we're looking at it on the screen, they, they'll have, you know, just for desirability, I see that the house sits a little closer to that lot than the other one. There's plenty of room there for the, for the next, you know, design on the next lot to the right.
Yeah, so that parcel, this parcel is meeting with a setback. It's a seven foot setback. The code does allow uncovered porches to project into that setback. And they're meeting that standard. So the parcel to the right will also have a minimum seven foot setback with the building itself. So they're going to have 14 feet, you know, a minimum of 14 feet between structures.
Anybody else?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So you know, we're looking for, well, we got open this to public comment. So public comment on this project. So again, Katie, will you flash the number before we move on too much? Is there anybody that we have on hold want to talk about this or anything going on? Liz and everybody, obviously, everybody was letting know what was going on. So the people above them, they got a letter or something. Everybody knew what was going on.
Yeah, we did actually do extra reach outreach because they, previous, the owners listed on the record had moved. And so there are new, new residents there and we were able to connect with them. And I'm not sure that there's someone sitting in on the Zoom and I'm not sure if that's an agent or if that's the neighbor, but they may want to speak as well.
That's Lane from Friesen.
Oh, designer.
That's me. Hi guys.
Sorry, it's, there's a different name on your phone. I thought it was you, but.
Yeah, no, it's my wife's account. So I'm, I'm not technically advanced quite yet enough to do this on my own, I guess.
Well, you have any comments that you'd like to make about it?
This couldn't have said it any better. I just really appreciate the way she presented that for us and our client. And yeah, I mean, I guess one thing to say is like you said, it's only a 1600 square foot house. So it's, it's not like we were trying to blow something out and it didn't fit. It's just a lot of constraints there. But like, yeah, she said it very well.
Yeah, and to, to add into the part about the neighbor, actually Katie talked to them on the phone, I think that was yesterday, and explained to the project. So they had just found out because they recently moved in, they had just found out about the project and she explained it to them and that they had the, you know, opportunity to participate in the meeting and it seems like they were satisfied.
Hey. Are we getting anything, Katie?
We are not.
All right, looking for that comment to close public comment.
I'll make the motion that we close the comment at this time.
I'll second it.
All right. All the comments closed. All right, let's move on. So anything else, any more discussion on this? Sounds like we're ready for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution P 2021-3063. Resolution, planning commission for approving a variance to a single family residence to project, project five feet into the 25 foot setback in R110 district.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sikes.
Yes.
All right. Well, there you go. Congratulations. Looks like it's going to be very modern looking. All right. I guess we're up to you, Liz. We have anything background, anything going on right now?
We included the monthly report, the city council's monthly report for the community development department for the month of April. I can just run over a few little facts of interest of things that we've been working on really briefly. Total of 22 building permits were issued in April. One was for a single family residence. Oh, and the other cup that they're doing today, kind of interesting, is replacing or installing Tesla batteries at the wastewater treatment plant and also at the water pump, water pump station on Yell River Drive. And so that's a pretty big undertaking. And our inspector, even though it's a public works project, the building inspector is inspecting it for bolts and they had to approve a special bolt today. But that's something that has to continue until it's finished. And so they expect to be working until midnight. So he has to be there on site to inspect as they go because it's, I believe that the treatment plant is not operating right now while they're replacing that battery. So, or installing that battery. So that's kind of interesting.
You could do that and raise food mart too, in the back.
I'm not sure. That would be, I'm not sure. Do you know about that, Katie?
You're off, Katie.
Sorry.
You're muted, Katie.
Takes her a minute because she has so many laptops there.
They, they did apply for a building permit. It was quite a while back. So then maybe they just finally got started on the work.
Was that a generator or a battery that they installed?
They have a, I believe they have a generator and then they also were doing some battery.
Yeah, because she's, that's the first time I heard that Tesla battery. And they'd called, asked us to move all our equipment out of the way for they can get in there. It's going to be very tight back there now, even tighter than it was. Sorry, I mean, I interrupted you about it.
A lot of new stuff's going on, like that new technology safety, for safety purposes. City is applying for a couple of, or, you know, a couple of grants. CDBG grant for citywide improvements and COVID relief. That's an over the CDBG grant for citywide improvements and COVID relief. That's an over the counter grant that we expect to receive. Still working on AD accessory dwelling unit and multi-family design review standards, ordinance and programs that will be coming to the planning commission and hopefully in the next, should be in the next few months. A lot of activity on nuisance abatement. Um, all of the, all of the smaller ones that, you know, before we had the, before we hired the code enforcement officer that fell on building and planning. And so all of the smaller ones, we really appreciate the help. It's, and I think it's really great for the city that these things are getting done, you know, with the code enforcement officer. He's got enforcement background, working with the city attorney on the legal notices and things. Um, but the two significant ones that went, went on Runerville Road that is significantly cleaned up and still working on coming into compliance. And then the one on Acacia Drive, which has been completely cleared. It was uh, extreme, extremely dilapidated and a health hazard and a nuisance for the neighbors. And that one actually ended up burning. And, um, so it's been completely cleaned up. And then just a couple of things, working on implementing or coordinating, getting some subdivision maps, um, recorded and that's a lot of activity. The there, there's five that are really active now. Avery Court, um, Newburgh Road, Newburgh on, uh, Newburgh at Lawndale, Christensen on Kenmore, and then the multi-families development that's been constructed on Smith Lane. And actually, that's all I have. Those are the kind of more significant things, but there's a lot of other stuff going on as well, obviously. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask us. Or give us a call or an email anytime.
Anybody have anything? All right, looking for that end of the night.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, Katie, one more?
Roll call votes.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Saitz.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Good to see you.
Thank you, everyone.